Good evening, Mount Vernon. Today is Wednesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And this is prequel to our regular city council meeting. Uh, we do have two public hearings this morning. Uh, for those in the chambers, um. If you need to exit, there's two exits here in city council chambers. You can use the double doors at the beginning of the pews, or you can use the back door. Um, if you need to use the restroom, ladies, the restroom is right outside the double door to the right, gentlemen. The restroom is outside the double doors. You'll go straight to the main staircase and it'll be on the right hand side. If you have a cellphone, please put it on silent or turn it off. If you need to answer a call, please go out into the hallway. Um, if there's an emergency, you can use two exits that I've identified. Uh, the main staircase, as I said, is straight ahead through the double doors. There's also another set of staircases uh, to the right, want to exit either of the doors, um, and that will take you down to the ground level. We are supposed to do the pledge of allegiance and because our DC is so tired, I'm gonna give him the honor. Thank you very much. All right, um, so to start the first public hearing for the health clubs, um, can we have a reading of the notice, uh, clerk?
This is a city council public hearing and regular meeting scheduled today, Wednesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, starting at seven P M. We're here in the city council chambers at City Hall for an amendment to chapter two six seven zoning of the code of the city of Mount Vernon, quote unquote, code to permit and regulate as principal permitted uses called health clubs and fitness center in cult in the city of Mount Vernon. And amendment to chapter ten, architectural review board and chapter two six seven zoning of the code of the city of Mount Vernon to extend the expiration of approvals from the city land, city's land use boards from two years to thirty months after the issuance of a building permit, followed by a regular uh, city council meeting. This notice was sent and published in the Journal News on September second and August twenty-nine and August twenty-fifth. It was also noticed on the websites, on socials and in the retunda.
Thank you very much, clerk. Uh, Opo?
Councilman Box Hill. Councilwoman Gleason.
Yes, mics, everyone.
Yep, present.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gleason, present, Councilman Potte.
Here.
Councilman Thompson.
Here.
Council President Brown.
Here. You, all right, uh, clerk, do we have any correspondence, written correspondence for the hearing?
I did not receive any written correspondence from the public.
Thank you. Um, so we're gonna see if we have any folks who wanna speak in favor of this legislation. Um, I'm gonna say three times for those online and in-house. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this legislation? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this amendment? And is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the zoning text amendment? Okay, um, we're going to those opposed. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this legislation? Is there anyone who will speak against, uh, this legislation? And is there anyone who would like to speak against this zone text amendment? All right, hearing none and receiving no correspondence. Um, do we have a motion to close the hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potte.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye. All right, we're gonna move on to the second public hearing for the night. Uh, this is for the land use amendment. Um, can I have a reading of the meeting notice, please clerk?
Yes. Same thing. City Council Public Hearing today, Wednesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, starting at seven P M. Here in the city council chambers. An amendment to chapter two six seven zoning of the code of the city of Mount Vernon to permit and regulate as principal permitted used health clubs and fitness centers the city of Mount Vernon in an amendment to chapter ten architectural review board and chapter two six seven zoning of the code of the city of Mount Vernon to extend the expiration of approvals from the city's land use board from two years to thirty months after the issuance of a permit, followed by a regular city council meeting. This was noted in the Journal News on September second, August twenty-nine and August twenty-fifth, also on the city website, socials and the retunda.
Thank you, clerk. Um, I'm not sure, do we need another roll call for this public hearing? Oh. Yes, all right, can we have a roll call for this public hearing?
Councilman Box Hill. Councilwoman Gleason.
Here.
Councilman Potte.
Here.
Councilwoman Thompson.
Here.
Council President.
Here. Um, clerk, do we have any written correspondence about this public hearing, for this public hearing?
I have not received any written correspondence from the public regarding this public hearing.
Awesome, we'll move to the speaker for the public hearing. Are there any, is there anyone in-house who would like to speak for this legislation? Is there anyone in-house or online who would like to speak for this legislation? Is there anyone in-house or online who would like to speak for this legislation? All right, we'll move to the speakers against this legislation. Are there any speakers online or in-house who would like to speak against this legislation? Are there any speakers online or in-house who would like to speak against this legislation? And finally, are there any speakers online or in-house who would like to speak against this legislation? All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion to close this public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potte.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye. Um, thank you, everyone. That concludes our public hearing for the evening. Because today is Wednesday, we do have a public comment session. Um, so we will go into the public, uh, to the speakers. So folks who are on the speaking list for tonight, you have four minutes to speak. Um, there's no buzzer at the three-minute mark anymore, right? All right, so you have four minutes to speak. Your time will be in front of you. When you come up, please state your name and your address for the record. Um, and once you finish speaking, the council members will, uh, speak at the end of the last speaker for tonight. All right, so I'm gonna start with the names. Do we have Mr. Robert Manning, Jr.? Is he online? Positive, negative? Not online. All right, we'll come back. Um, Ms. Vernell Arenas? Is she online? No. Mr. Peter Toshallus?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Peter Toshallus, I'm a resident of Mount Vernon. I own some property. I was forced to buy property to stay, to go into this, to stay into this business, which I was also told to get licensed correctly by the police department, manipulated, misrepresented. Uh, went, jumped through all the hoops they gave me. Forty-two years later, I'm still here. They didn't get rid of me. They tried in the hardest way. They ignore me. I've been in front of the council way before you guys were even probably old enough to come to a council meeting. And I get no satisfaction. Before we did the pledge of allegiance, liberty and justice for all, what about me? It's not for everybody. I sit here and I listen to some of these people that come in front of the council and you're very disrespectful to them. They may not be the most intelligent and well-spoken people, neither am I. Okay, I'm just a blue-collar jerk that pays taxes, but I get ignored and it's very frustrating. Today's society, today's politics, this is not acceptable. Okay, I came here as an immigrant. I struggled my way up. I'm in the restaurant business, a machinist. I worked in construction. I did many things, many hats, numerous jobs at the same time, mechanic at the bus company. I did a lot for this community and still do. I'm very well-respected in the street. What's the matter with you people? I talk to you, I ask you, you say you're gonna come and look, investigate. I talk to you, and you guys blow me off like, okay, that's enough, time's over. Unfortunately, four minutes. Okay. Nineteen ninety-two. Because they didn't like what I was doing, and I asked my mom, I said, Mom, don't bother nobody. I do everything right. I try to. Live a good life the way you brought me up. We come from Greece, Sparta, where democracy was born and, and practiced. Communal. And my mom said they're jealous of you. So I wear dirty clothes, I drive, beat up old truck, but I'm a, I got a good reputation in this town. I'm more popular than the mayor. And yet, I'm disrespected, ignored. Did you come down to look at that bus situation where they park everywhere and nobody could do business except for the bus company? Did anybody come to fix my, my sidewalk? Eight years later, did anybody come to see the flood? The damage that was done on the infrastructure, Miller Place, they came and put blacktop over it and went away. I got a list of stuff. I could stay here for hours and I don't have enough time, okay? I was disrespected, beat, nineteen ninety-two, same week as Rodney King. You didn't see me on television by the police department, two times, and I had to fight for my rights to stay in business. I should've took the money and ran. And you guys are still doing it now. You're abusive, you're bullies. I need to work, pay my taxes. I'm on the foreclosure list, all right? And I'm not gonna tell you the rest of this stuff because I got advice to wait for my FOEL request to never get answered. So I got some ammunition, and then maybe you'll talk to me then. Thank you, no due respect, all due respect. I don't mean to sound disrespectful, but goddamn it, it's the only way you get attention in this world, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Rena James? Is Ms. Rena James online? Mr. Jeff Monroe?
Good evening, uh, council and staff. Good evening, community. Uh, for the record, my name is Jeff Monroe. I'd like to address the, um, the unfortunate development of the local landing of the, um, uh, Immigration and Customs Enforcement action on September third on Columbus Avenue last, um, last Wednesday. So this, um, this development of ICE raids, as they call them, and, um, federal extrajudicial actions against, uh, civilians and anything with just basically lacking due process has become something so endemic to the, um, the colonial nature of the United States that has finally hit Mount Vernon, almost literally at my doorstep because it was on my block. So I'm called to speak to this because I realize that I'm really only here actually is uh, many efforts that I've made in the past to engage, not just with the body, but sometimes with individuals, but more importantly with institutional power, right? With the state. I'm a member of the community, the society that you subject your power to, and for what we might think of what's left of the democracy here, I think it's still not just my right, but it's my obligation, my duty to actually get you, the body, and through the individual efforts if, if you want to, but mostly it's your collective power that we need you to act on. I see that these ICE raids are an execution of a federal, uh, institution that has never been right in this country. It's always been a colonial murderous power, and those powers bleed down, literally in many cases, to the streets of many urban centers, especially non-white communities in the United States. And I realize that many of the most egregious powers of the state at this point, the federal state, um, play themselves out in ways that we don't really understand in local terms, where we're never really educated. We certainly are miseducated in schools. We're certainly lied to and mis-informed in the public media. Uh, we're also unfortunately fed even more misinformation from our official leadership, which is why I'm here speaking to you. I've come to this body to ask about your, um, at least your op- opinion-based, um, issue, uh, your opinion-based, um, responses on the issue of the genocide ongoing in Palestine. I've had no responses of any real uh, substantive meaning from any individual and certainly no actions of even a symbolic nature. Um, but you've been symbolic enough to revise, um, legislation to keep Iran in sanctions for your, for your legislation, right? And yet, here we are with ICE raids on the, on the, on the very corners of our streets. Uh, we don't even know. In fact, I should qualify my statement. I don't know for a fact if it's an ICE raid. I don't, I don't underst- I don't, I haven't seen any evidence that these are actual ICE agents. The witnesses I've heard from only know dubiously that five people were taken. We don't know where they were taken to or by whom or in what orders. But this is the United States. These things happen, right? But you are our, our officials. It's your job to act in our interest. So I'm wondering for the record, what are you all gonna do to protect our people as much as you can? Uh, our mayor, our mayor is, um, quite, um, a police state-loving official. She's enabled cameras and four, eight and sixteen K cameras to be installed for surveillance around the community with nothing but rhetorical flourish about preventing crime, which is absolute BS because there's no data to prove that cameras or even police prevent crime. But here we are dealing with the rhetoric and he, and here we are dealing with the actions that data, uh, consumption, data collection and aggregation, license plate readers and various techn- technical and technological, um, mechanisms are being put in place in Mount Vernon, but I see no pushback. I see no inquiry. I see no investigation from this body. And here we are with ICE agents flooding our streets. So I'm wondering what pushback, or at least for the moment, what opinion you may have, and if not your opinion, frankly, what are you gonna do policy-wise to protect or at least pretend to act in the sincere way, more sincere than these false oaths and promises we make to a colonial flag, et cetera. I mean, what are you gonna do about this actual police state and the way it affects our police? Our over-policed people. We have people who are so-called immigrants in this community. And I think that we should begin the conversation with what a real immigrant is anyway because most of us here, I'm pretty sure no one in this room has ancestors that were indigenous to this land. And even if you have indigenous ancestors, you have the right and the duty to protect their legacy and resist the ongoing colonial opposition, the on- on- ongoing, uh, occupation of the land. So I'm wondering what you're going to do to protect our people in light of this ongoing colonial condition?
All right, um, Ms. Nicole White?
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
My name is.
Bring the mic closer to you, please.
My name is Nicole White, and I'm coming on behalf of some of the residents of the five hundred blocks of South Third Avenue. This summer, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, there were fourteen weekends in the summer. Ten weekends had an event at Brush Park. We, as the residents, are asking, if possible, are we allowed to get a decal? Because our streets are closed. If you are on the center street to Third Avenue, that is closed around between the four o'clock, four-thirty range and remains closed. If you are on Sanford and Third Avenue, they close that block around nine-thirty to ten o'clock, ten-thirty. We, as residents, were told to drive around. Another resident sat in her car for forty-five minutes until the street was cleared. We are either asking, we are asking for decals. When we told them we lived on the block and offered to show our license, that was, nothing was done. So we're asking for either something to be put in our car, and we're also asking for a calendar because due to the ten weekends that something was held, we were unable to hold barbecues in our own backyard because of all the street parking and everything was taken up. And that's it.
Thank you. All right, I'll go back through, uh, the list to see if anyone's joined us, uh, online. I don't see anyone in-house. Uh, Robert Manning, Jr. Anyone online? Has anyone joined online? All right, so I won't go back through the names. All right, uh, we'll get into council responses. Um, gonna start with Councilwoman Gleason?
Sure, why not? Okay, um, I just double-checked with the, uh, police department, uh, regarding uh, Pete the tow truck driver's license. His license is, is a hundred percent, so I'm not really sure what the complaint was regarding the police department, but I just wanted to have that clear. Uh, Jeff, can you come back up again? Just one second, please. I wanted to have a better understanding. You said that, um, this happened on Columbus Avenue. Where, where did this, uh, alleged ICE raid happen?
So according to the Facebook post I saw.
Do you have the microphone? Is it there? Hold on a minute.
According to the Facebook post that I saw on Sunday, one that was posted on September, I think it was September fourth, that, with a local news, news, uh, Mount Vernon News Center website, the pictures that, it was a screenshot collage, so it weren't actual, weren't, they weren't pictures to be engaged with. There were screenshots of four pictures and an indication of another three. So I only saw angles that reflected, uh, a westbound view, uh, of Columbus Avenue across from the Russell Speeders uh, car wash in front of, uh, two sixteen Columbus Avenue. And, um, I saw what appeared to be officials in flat jackets with holstered firearms and, uh, blacked-out vehicles that were parked, civilian blacked-out vehicles that were parked in the street, and it appeared to be some kind of official police action. So, uh, the text that I read gave me the rest of the information. I reached out to a couple of people that told me they've heard about it. Um, that's all I found out in the last forty-eight hours.
Thank you very much. I'll look into that. Um, and that is all I have to say on Jeff. I'll look into that, um, issue there. Um, Ms. White, uh, Brush Park, can you come up one more time if that's okay? I don't present, just.
Oh, go for it.
I don't wanna keep you too long, but I wanted to ask you, so the people who, um, lived on the five hundred block were not allowed in, even after they told? So were there police officers there?
If you come down Seventh Street and Third Avenue, that block early in the afternoon, Stanford side is where we can't try to come down. My son was told to walk and then to.
And that's the block that you live on? And you, and he explained to them that he lives on that block and they told him he had to walk to his house?
And another resident on the same block, she was told she had to wait, so she waited in her car for forty-five minutes until they opened up the street.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak to the police department about that. I mean, I've been, no, but I've been at events and, and, uh, that's, that's all I need, um, but I've been at events where I've seen the police officers move the barriers so that people live on that block can get into their driveways. So thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
All right. Um, and that is it. Thank you.
Councilman Box Hill?
Um, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. Uh, Mr. Monroe, we are going to, uh, look into that as well, so. Yeah, um, I, I didn't hear about that raid personally, but that is definitely concerning, um. Nicole White, yeah, I've been to a couple of those events and I do see the police blocking off the street. I was, like, um, Councilwoman Gleason, Councilwoman Gleason said, I didn't realize that you couldn't come in, even if you lived there. Understood. Yeah, I, um, I tend to agree with you. I don't think that's fair, um, that you can't get into your property, so we, we definitely have to address that. Um, who else? Mr. Toshallus Peter, I, I don't know, it's unfortunate that he feels that he's so disrespected, um. We're always open. I can speak for myself that, um, I met with him with Corporation Counsel a few weeks back, um. As a matter of fact, he was forty-five minutes late to our meeting and we sat there and we waited patiently for him to show up and we addressed his issues. Um, so I don't know, I'm confused by his, his anger tonight. So, um, again, if he wants to reach out, still here, so. That's all my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Thompson?
Yes, well, I, I know Gleason and Box Hill, um, covered everything. I just addressed the last thing, um, which was, um, cameras throughout the city. I know that they do, um, help prevent crimes within the city. Um, and having cameras will help deter people from, um, and data shows that it does help um, prevent crime and also, um, deter people from committing, um, several crimes, so. Uh, I, I want to assure the, the community that this council is doing the very best it can to, um, we're committed to make sure that our community is safe. We're committed to making sure our residents, um, feel safe, our, our businesses feel safe, and we're doing the very best we can. And, um, if anyone has any issues or concerns, uh, that's what we're here for, to have a conversation, see how we can better assist our community. Um, but with that, um, token, we wanna be mindful of how we speak to one another, because it's not what you say, it's how you say it. And it's not what you do, it's how you do it. So we just wanna make sure that we're respectful towards one another. And, um, let's continue to work together to get the best out of everything for our community. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Potte?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I don't wanna restate what Councilmember Box Hill or Gleason said. Uh, so I'll be brief. Uh, Ms. White, you're in good hands with Councilwoman Gleason. I think that you're a hundred percent correct to be upset about what's happening, uh, around your property and not be able to park. Um, Ms. Anderson, our aide, is also here. I would humbly ask, stay on top of us. If you don't get the resolution that you need within a month, please come back. Because we do wanna make sure that, that next summer, when those events start, that you're not subjected to that again. Uh, Mr. Monroe, um, I, I just wanna say that I'm grateful that you're always showing up and giving us your input as to what's happening in the community. As Councilmember Thompson often says, we, we, I can't be everywhere. So thank you for coming and telling us what's happening with, with ICE. You were asking about what opinions that we have because I'm sure you realize as, uh, city representatives, there's not a lot we can do on the federal level. Um, obviously, what ICE is doing sucks. And we know now ICE is in Boston, that they're planning big raids. Uh, we're not sure if it was ICE that you saw, but it probably is the way that they're acting. It's illegal, it's unconstitutional. Um, so that's how I feel about it. What should we do about it? Uh, like Obama says, vote. Don't boo, vote. We have, uh, federal elections coming up in twenty-five, small ones. Much more is coming up in twenty-six, uh, so I'll be working to get people registered and then push them to the polls to vote, uh, in twenty-five and twenty-six because honestly, there's nothing else that we can do but win the midterms. Um, so that's my take on what we can do and that's my take on how I feel about it. Uh, lastly, Mr. S- S- Pete, he's not here. Uh, I just wanna say for the record, I'm really proud of my councilmates. Um, just for the record, uh, he's come here before with those complaints. I'm sure Councilmember Box Hill and Councilwoman Gleason both went to meet him. Um, and I know that they're doing the work constantly, uh, to make sure that things are better for residents here in Mount Vernon. I just wanted just to put that on the record. Uh, that's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, uh, Ms. White, I agree with you. Um, you know, frustration is warranted. Uh, I don't think you need a decal. Your ID should be enough. It has your, your address on it. Um, that should be sufficient. I think this is a matter of training. Um, or there needs to be a better policy on how people exit and where they can exit. So if they use one side of the street and allow cars to travel on the next side, that will be something. So hopefully, uh, Councilwoman uh, Gleason will take care of it. She'll talk with PD, um, and she can give that suggestion to them. In addition, Councilman Thompson, um, I don't disagree with Ms. White about the schedule, right? And the purpose of owning property is so that you can enjoy it, right? And if you don't have the ability to do it, because there's a party every other weekend, um, so perhaps, uh, what is it, commissioners of H R, I mean, of H R, commissioner of recreation can share a schedule with those folks on the block, um, so that they're prepared for the summer or plan. Go ahead, Councilwoman Thompson.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to, um, commission- Yeah, I'll I'll speak to uh Commissioner Pickney about that as well, and um it's it's just strange to me that. An officer would not allow someone through the block, especially when they present their ID, but I um um. I'll work collaboratively with Gleason to ensure. Yeah, but even even then, even then when that happens. Um Seventh Street, there are no homes on Seventh Street in that little block. So if there's a dismissal where you need to disperse them that way, disperse them that way, but don't ever prevent someone from getting into homes, that's. Excuse me, that's just totally disrespectful, so um we'll have a conversation about that and I'll get that already, thank you again.
Sure, Councilwoman Gleason.
Uh one thing I wanted to add to uh for the community, if you go on CNV NY dot com and go under our city council page. It has our standing committees, so I also wanna invite the citizens, because sometimes it gets away from. Oh, I can't make it on a Wednesday night, it's too late for me, or or what have you, our emails are on uh the website under city council. So I wanna make sure that the community understands that they could always communicate with us that way. Or through our legislative aide, Antonette Anderson, her um email address is on there also, or the clerk's office, Stephanie Clerk or the clerk. Those messages will always get to us, and we can have an answer for you by the time, like within twenty four, forty eight hours, if it's something. Easy like that, or at least we'll try and make it um, you know, get back to you as quickly as possible, thank you so much.
Um yeah, so thank you, Miss White, for coming out, um Mister Monroe, thank you for coming out as well. I guess I am curious, right, because I'm I'm sure you know uh with you being familiar with politics as it is. That immigration enforcement is carried out by the federal government and not within city council's authority or the city's authority period, right? So I guess besides, you said, how are we gonna protect our residents, um? I guess what is the expectation, what are you expecting, and I I invite you up to um comment if you would like to, um. You know, there can be, the city can hold Know Your Rights uh event, right, uh they can collaborate with Legal Aid to have those events. Um but what exactly is the expectation when it comes to protecting the residents there?
Uh Council President, I actually appreciate that question, and I would never expect to do that dialogue here or in this forum. I think that the, first of all, our officials deserve um better effort and. I think institutional mechanisms, I don't know that we have them here in Mount Vernon, we do these four minute things every twice a month and. We go to see uh school board meetings, et cetera, we don't have public forums, I've spoken to all of that. At various points in the last decade or so at this podium, uh maybe not to everyone here, but the point is we need institutional. Uh um enabling of dialogue, right? We need ways to actually engage between the state and the community, so that you know what our needs are, so that you can meet the needs. So that you're not always just being reactionary, police, again, to Councilwoman Thompson's um opinion that. Crimes prevented by these mechanisms, the data shows the opposite, okay?
So uh Mister Monroe, I want to, I want you to say focus on what I asked you.
To that point, I'm making the case that uh you know lotteries for cameras, for instance, are not.
No, again, you're telling us about things that we've done that you don't appreciate, tell us about what you want us to do.
Right, I want you to engage us, for instance, I sat on a public uh cable advisory committee. The body basically disabled, I so I know somebody said uh that I meant. This uh this disassembled, I did not say disassembled at the time, I said disabled, because the people who were appointed to it. Were allowed to term out, and that's an that's an organ of community voice and official voice, right? Basic institutions like that should be enabled in the city, we shouldn't have to wait for Facebook. Um myself, I'm not an active Facebook user every hour of every day, I do engage with it to see what we're doing. In our community frankly, because Facebook is almost useless to me any other way, I'm an organizer with. Live action people in spaces around the tri-state area, I think. To answer your question, you as a body should do better at actually equipping the people with better ways to engage each other. For instance, again, um I've I've helped uh run a food distribution program, right? We meet various peoples uh of various communities uh in this city, of various ages. In that activity, right, we went to a farm two two days ago. And that's the kind, that's the kind of thing that people do, but we have no enabling institution from the body to do that.
Just Andrew, Mister Monroe, um I understand that you want more engagement, but I don't see how that relates to the protection of the ICE raids. Right?
Okay.
They're separate things for me, and and I don't want you to continue on, we can talk off record. But if you have specific ideas that you would like to see us implement, I would be happy to to work with you to do those things. But I want it to be related to what you said, or it could be other ideas, I'm happy to work with you to get those things done, alright, thank you for coming back up. Councilwoman Gleason, you want us to say something else? Alright.
I mean, I understand what it was remote. But no, I have no further comment.
Alright, um we're gonna go ahead and, does anyone need a break? Alright, we're gonna go ahead and move into the tally sheet, wanna start with legislation and public works?
Thank you, Madam President. I am number one, Mount Vernon Public Library, an ordinance authorizing the temporary closure of. One city block for the seventh annual Mount Vernon Public Library Comic Expo, September twenty eighth. From twelve PM to seven AM, that is on the agenda. Item number two, Department of Law and Ordinance Establishing a Freedom of Information Law Compliance Policy. For the City of Mount Vernon, New York, that is on the agenda. Item number three, Office of the Mayor and Ordinance Authorizing the Amendment of the City Charter Regarding the City's Budget Cycle. Schedule that is called for. Item number four, Mayor's Office, Office of the Mayor and Ordinance Rescinding. Ordinance number four, adopted on August fourteenth, entitled an ordinance authorizing the mayor to attend. The New York Conference of Mayors and Municipal Officials, NICOM, twenty twenty four, uh twelve, oh gosh, I'm going backwards. Twenty twenty five Fall Training uh School, that is on the agenda. Item number five, Mayor's Office, Office of the Mayor and Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Attend. United States Conference of Mayors, twenty twenty five Fall Leadership Meeting in Oklahoma City. Oklahoma, September twenty fifth to twenty seventh, that is on the agenda. Item number six, Department of uh Public Works and Ordinance Authorizing Budget Line Transfers Within the Department of Public Works. To cover current negative balances and support future purchases. Uh that was agenda pending, it is now agenda, I understand uh the letter did come in this afternoon, I did not review it myself. Clerk, did you um the numbers that they're matching? Okay, thank you. Item number seven, Public Works, Department of Public Works and Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Accept the Community Resilience. Economic Sustainability and Technology Program Crest Grant Awarded by the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York, DASNY. For renovations at the Dole Center, that is two million seven hundred and four thousand dollars, that is on the agenda. Item number eight, Public Works, Department of Public Works and Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an Agreement. With Enterprise Fleet Management for the Lease and Acquisition of Fleet Vehicles. For the Department of Public Works, that was agenda pending on Monday, and we are calling for it now, or I have to call for it. When we vote, okay, that is gonna be end up um being called for on the floor, there's uh further information necessary to move that forward. Item number nine, Department of Public Works and Ordinance Authorizing the Amendment of Ordinance Number One. Adopted by the City Council on June eleventh, twenty twenty five, entitled an ordinance granting a one-year leave of absence. To Mister Alexis Montero to fill the position of Stormwater Coordinator within the Department of Public Works, that is on the agenda. Item number ten, Board of Water Supply and Ordinance Authorizing a Leave of Absence Without Pay. For Mister Akeem Vereen, Water Meter Reader, Board of Water Supply, that is on the agenda. Item number eleven, a local law establishing an administrative search warrant procedure, that is on the agenda. Item number twelve, Office of the City Clerk and Ordinance Authorizing the Amendment of Ordinance Number Twelve. Adopted by the City Council on August fourteenth, twenty twenty five, entitled an ordinance authorizing the City Clerk. An executive assistant to attend the twenty twenty five NICOM Fall Training School in Lake Placid, New York, the only um. Difference with that is that there is a a small added cost for an additional hotel room, and that is all I have, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gleason, um Human Resources doesn't have anything, so we're gonna move on to Public Safety and Codes.
Thank you, Council President, um I am number thirteen from Consumer Protection, August twenty twenty five monthly report. Is for information purposes only, item number fourteen is on the agenda from Public Safety and Ordinance. Authorizing three members of service of the Department of Public Safety to attend the Glock Armored School. Item number fifteen is. Called for, an ordinance authorizing the award of a contract for the red light camera. Violation photo enforcement and monitoring system. Uh item number sixteen is held, uh Department of Public Safety and and. Ordinance authorizing three members of service to attend the SWAC Command Decision Making and Leadership One Course. Item number seventeen uh is on the agenda from Public Safety and Ordinance Authorizing. Two members of service to attend the Tactical Narcotics Debriefing Training Course. Item number eighteen is on the agenda from Public Safety and Ordinance. Authorizing four members of service from the Department of Public Safety. To attend the twenty twenty five Excelsior Challenge Training. At the New York State Preparedness Training Center from September twenty ninth to October third. And last, item number nineteen is on the agenda from some city council. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon, referring a proposed amendment. To the Code of the City of Mount Vernon, increasing maximum permitted driveway width. To the City Corporation Council and scheduling a public hearing, and that's all that I have.
Awesome, thank you, uh gonna move into Finance and Planning.
Thank you, Madam President, uh number twenty, Office of Assessment and Ordinance Authorizing a Refund of Taxes Paid or. On incorrectly assessed property concerns to all potential, section five five zero, and that's on the agenda.
Sounds good, can we have a roll call to enter into the legislative?
We had some questions on that on on Monday, were they answered? Because I have it as agenda pending. Were there questions regarding that?
No.
Regarding the school, no?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Uh can we have a roll call to enter to into our legislative session, please?
Councilman Box Hill.
President.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Here.
Councilman Potte.
Here.
Councilman Thompson.
Here.
Council President Brown.
Here. Alright, Legislation and Public Works?
Thank you, Madam President. Item number one. An ordinance authorizing the temporary closure of one city block for seventh annual, for the seventh annual Mount Vernon Public Library. Comic Expo, September twenty eighth, from twelve PM to seven PM, so moved.
Second.
On the question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Brown.
Hi.
Item number two, Department of Law and Ordinance Establishing a Freedom of Information Law Compliance Policy. For the City of Mount Vernon, New York, so moved.
Second.
Want a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Brown.
Hi.
Item number three, Office of the Mayor and Ordinance Rescinding, ordinance number four. Adopted on eighth August fourteenth, twenty twenty five, entitled an ordinance authorizing the mayor to attend the New York Conference of Mayors and Municipal Officials. NICOM twenty twenty five Fall Training Schedule, so moved.
Second.
Want a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte. Councilman Thompson. Council President Brown.
Hi.
Item number four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to attend the United States Conference of Mayors. U USC M twenty twenty five Fall Leadership Meeting in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, September twenty fifth to twenty seventh, so moved.
Second.
Want a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Brown.
Hi.
Item number five, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing budget line transfers. Transfers within the Department of Public Works to cover current negative balances and support future purchases, so moved.
Second.
Want a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Brown.
Hi.
Why are the cameras not, oh, there they are. Alright, item number six, Department of Public Works and Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor. To Accept the Community Resilience Economic Sustainability and Technology Program Crest Grant. Awarded by the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York, DASNY, for renovations at the Dole Center. In the amount of two million seven hundred and four thousand dollars, so moved.
Second.
Want a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Brown.
Hi.
Item number seven, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement. With Enterprise Fleet Management for the Lease and Acquisition of Fleet Vehicles for the Department of Public Works. This is going to be called for on the floor.
Held on.
Held on.
Held on the floor. Sorry. Okay, item number eight, Department of Public Works and Ordinance Authorizing the Amendment. Of Ordinance Number One, adopted by the City Council on June eleventh, twenty twenty five. Entitled an ordinance granting a one-year leave of absence to Mister Alexis Montero. To fill the position of Stormwater Coordinator within the Department of Public Works, so moved.
Second.
Want a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Brown.
Hi.
Item number nine, Board of Water Supply, an ordinance authorizing a Leave of Absence Without Pay. For Mister Akeem Vereen, Water Meter Reader, Board of Water Supply, so moved.
Second.
Want a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Brown.
Hi.
Item number ten, Local Law Number of twenty twenty five, a local law of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon, New York. Establishing an administrative search warrant procedure to be used in conjunction with Local Law Number Six. Of twenty twenty four, entitled a local government code enforcement program, so moved.
Second.
Want a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Brown.
Hi.
Item number eleven, Office of the City Clerk and Orth- and Ordinance Authorizing the Amendment of Ordinance Number Twelve. Adopted by the City Council on August fourteenth, twenty twenty five, entitled. An ordinance authorizing the City Clerk and Executive Assistant to Attend the twenty twenty five NICOM Fall Training School. In Lake Placid, New York, so moved.
Second.
Want a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Brown.
Hi.
That is it, Madam President, for uh LBW.
Thank you, moving on to Public Safety and Codes.
Thank you, Madam President, uh I am number twelve on Public Safety and and. Ordinance, excuse me, authorizing three members of service of the Department of Public Safety to attend the Glock Armored School. From December fourth, twenty twenty five, uh from eight AM to five PM, so moved.
Want a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Brown.
Hi.
I am number thirteen and. Ordinance authorizing two members of service to uh attend the Tactical Narcotics. Debriefing Training Course from September twenty second to September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, so.
Second.
Want a question, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Brown.
Hi.
I am number fourteen from Public Safety and Ordinance Authorizing Four Members of Service. From the Department of Public Safety to attend the twenty twenty five Excelsior Challenge Training. At the New York State Preparedness Training Center, uh September twenty ninth to October third, twenty twenty five, so. At the New York State Preparedness Training Center, uh, September twenty-ninth to October third, twenty twenty-five. So.
Second.
Want a question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Brown.
Hi.
Last item, I am number fifteen from City Council, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon. Referring a proposed uh amendment to the Code of the City of Mount Vernon. Increasing maximum per minute driveway width to the City Corporation Council and scheduling a public hearing. So.
Second.
Want a question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Brown.
Hi. Thank you, uh, Councilman Potte, Finance and Planning.
Yep, thank you, Madam President. Uh, Office of Assessment and Ordinance Authorizing. The refund of taxes paid on an incorrectly assessed property pursuant to RPTL Section five fifty. So moved. Second.
Want a question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Brown.
Hi. Um, that concludes our agenda. Are there any other comments, questions, concerns from council members?
Yes, Madam President.
Councilwoman Gleason.
I have two. One, I want to commend the Mount Vernon Police Department. There were a number of officers that um really. Popped into action outside of their job description and saved um a house full of people. Uh, that the house was on fire, and we're gonna be honoring them at a later date with the mayor, but I wanted to commend them. And the other, you know, most disturbing thing is what happened today in uh Utah Valley uh University with the uh. I don't even know, assassination of uh Charlie Clerk and uh, you know, to me. We we see it all the time here in uh Mount Vernon where you have a difference of opinion. And, you know, everybody has their own political views. Nobody should ever be killed for their freedom of speech, whether we agree with them or not. And, you know, I just think that we should take a moment of silence at the end of the meeting. I know he was uh, he was very controversial. In the, in the person that he was, but again, like I said, where this country is going when it comes to mass shootings and and just. Unexplained shootings, it's it's just disturbing.
Councilman Potte.
Thank you, Council President. Um, just want to talk about the ICE raids for a sec. Jeff Monroe brought that up, and it is a real thing. Um, and they are really coming to Boston, so they probably are in the. In the Westchester area. So if anyone is listening to this, if you see another raid. Uh, please let us know that they clearly aren't giving us warning, they aren't giving cities warning, they're just coming in, so please let us know. Um, to uh, until October twenty-fifth, you can register to vote, uh, so please do that. Uh, if you aren't registered, please register. That's the only way we can change the direction of this country. Um, as fetal as it may seem, is to vote. Uh, so if you aren't registered, please vote. Uh, registration, the deadline again is October uh twenty-fourth. Thank you, Council President.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Hi.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Hi.
Councilman Potte.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Brown.
Hi.
Stand for the long silence.
Thank you. Have a good evening, Mount Vernon.